First of many championships. Ask for a little quiet please on the side over there so we can get started. Thank you very much for your cooperation. And counsel. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Michael Ranka of Saint Jerome's Parish in Winchester Park. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Heenan. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
My friends, let us invoke the name of our God and ask that God, our Creator, be present to us at this time. Oh God, we gather here to ask your guidance and support as we carry out our deliberations and decisions for our constituents, the people of Philadelphia. Enlighten us as we consider the various needs and concerns of our people. Let us be true to our wonderful city, the cradle of liberty, the city of brotherly love, where both the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States of America were born. We share a great history of over 200 years of forming and fostering a city which truly cares about its people, extending the care in myriad ways such as in helping veterans, in opening doors for those whose conditions of living have seen too many doors close in front of them, in seeking to inform people about the programs available to facilitate improvement in their lives. As we have called upon you to be present to us, give us the foresight and the courage to respond to all that will continue to make this city great. We pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor for those inspiring words. Counsel will be these. Thank you. Our next order of business is approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 17, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 17, 2018 be approved.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And the meeting of Thursday, May 17 is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. I'd ask anyone with a cellphone or any other device that makes any kind of noise, please turn it off at this moment. Thank you very much. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to take a moment to thank everyone who has taken time out of their business day to come down and witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope your stay here today is a pleasurable one and a knowledgeable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here today. Alright. Alright, drumroll. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who will present a resolution congratulating... I said drumroll, not feedback. Congratulating the Philadelphia Eagles with Don Smolinski. And those accompanying him, please join the councilmen at the podium.
So today, we have the great privilege to stand as members of council to honor and show support for our Super Bowl 52 Eagles champions. Let's give them a real big round of applause. It's been a long time coming. So all my Dallas fans, I just want to publicly say y'all haven't had a championship in the last 10 years. And so, this is a new generation. And beyond that, we want to acknowledge the work that the Eagles have been doing throughout the city of Philadelphia. Most recently, we partnered with Conne Barwin in dedicating a multi-athletic field in South Philadelphia, our first turf football field. And most recently, they also had an opportunity to unveil their foundation for autism. And I know my colleague, Councilman Derrick Green, was very involved in that process. And so beyond being Super Bowl champions, they're also champions when it comes to contributing to the quality of life here in the city of Philadelphia. And so, I'm going to ask for my good friend from South Philadelphia, Councilman Mark Squiller, who will take a moment to lead us in that great Super Bowl championship Eagles theme song cheer. And so... So on a count of three, now y'all won't give me like a set of the whims, but it goes, it goes something like this. One, two, three. Fly Eagles, fly on the road to victory. Fly Eagles, fly, score a touchdown, one, two, three. One, two, three. Get 'em up, get 'em high, watch our Eagles fly. Fly Eagles, fly on the road to victory. Eagles, 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 Eagles! I wanted to get that out of my system. So when the citation reads congratulating the Philadelphia Eagles for their historic victory over the New England Patriots in Super Bowl 52. Whereas the Philadelphia Eagles are a cornerstone Philadelphia institution, during the tenure of its owner Jeffrey Lory and its president, Don Smolinski, the Eagles organization has been a model franchise. The organization's values are reflected in its deep engagement with fans and community members, in its charitable work with children and notably in the players themselves. And I would also like to acknowledge, we know beyond, behind every strong executive, there's even a stronger executive assistance. So Liz, there's the power behind the throne. I want to take a moment to acknowledge her, give her a round of applause.
Whereas, the team members brought together, under the leadership of Executive Vice President Howie Roseman, embodied a hardworking and resilient spirit that resonate deeply with the people of this great city. The strength of the team's character was exemplified this season by players advocacy for social justice, which received national attention. These efforts included advocacy from Criminal Justice Forum by Malcolm Jenkins, and donation of an entire season's salary by Chris Long for his educational equality. And you know that hungry dogs run faster. And...
And whereas the Philadelphia Eagles entered fall 2017 as a contender for a division title in the NFC East, their perennial rivals, the Dallas Cowboys and the New York Giants, were also predicted to have strong teams. However, and the Eagles came into the season prepared for a dogfight and...
Whereas, second-year head coach Doug Peterson and veterans such as Jason Peters, Zach Ertz, Malcolm Jenkins, Jason Kelsey, Fletcher Cox, and returning quarterback Carson Wentz, were joined in the offseason by new additions Torrey Smith, Alshon Jeffries, LeGarrette Blunt, and Chris Long. Meanwhile, backup quarterback Nick Foles made a return to the Eagles, which would prove critical addition later on.
Whereas, the city of passionate fans behind him, to say the least. We do have the best fans in the country. The Eagles began their season by winning 10 of their first 11 games. During this stretch, the team defeated each of their NFC rivals with two victories coming against Washington. And...
The seventh has three playgrounds from the Eagles, I must say, just for the record. Moffitt, Potter Thomas, and last year we built Elkins, thank you very much. And we are working on with Connor Darwin for Waterloo, so thank you very much Eagles. After a tough loss on the road against the Seattle Seahawks, the Eagles beat the Los Angeles Rams, but only after losing Carson Wentz to the season-ending knee injury. Prior to his injury, Wentz was considered a leading candidate for the NFL's Most Valuable Player Award. With all-pro tackle Jason Peters already sidelined with the season-ending injury, the Eagles' Super Bowl dreams were suddenly not in doubt. And whereas, in his first game as starting quarterback, Nick Foles made the city proud as he threw for 237 yards and four touchdowns in a 34 to 29 victory over the rival New York Giants. Foles took on starting quarterback duties for the rest of the season, and in spite of critics' doubts, lost only one game. And...
Whereas despite finishing their season with 13 wins against only three losses, a record that earned the team the top seed in the NFC playoffs, the Eagles were still dismissed by most commentators as they entered the playoffs. These doubts only fueled the team and its fans who embraced their underdog status. And...
Whereas against the odds, the Eagles beat both the Atlanta Falcons in the NFC Divisional Round and the Minnesota Vikings in the NFC Championship. These wins earned the Eagles their third trip to the Super Bowl and their first Super Bowl appearance since a tragic defeat at the hands of the New England Patriots in Super Bowl 39 in 2005. And... Whereas heading into the Super Bowl, after a convincing win against the Vikings in their previous game, the Eagles still maintain their underdog status against the favored New England Patriots. Donning their notorious German Shepherd masks, the team and its fans maintain their faith in the season's Super Bowl destiny. Despite the critics and shocked the Patriots and the rest of the world with a 41 to 33 victory. And...
Whereas the game featured a number of instantly classic moments in professional football history. Among them were cornerback touchdown catches by Alshon Jeffrey, Corey Clement, whose cousin Donna Clement Jackson works in my staff, and Zach Ertz. A gutsy fourth-down conversion in the fourth quarter, a dazzling strip sack by Brandon Graham of Patriots quarterback Tom Brady, and the legendary Philly special play, which resulted in a touchdown pass from tight end Trey Burton to quarterback Nick Foles. And...
Whereas, Foles was brilliant throughout the game, passing for 373 yards and three touchdowns, resulting in a stellar 106.1 passer rating. For these contributions, along with his leadership and poise during the game, he was named Super Bowl MVP. And...
Whereas the victory in Super Bowl 52 is the Eagles' first-ever Super Bowl title and the first NFL championship for the team since 1960, a full seven years before the first Super Bowl was played. After, after the Eagles' win, Philadelphians marked the joyous occasion by pouring into the streets to celebrate the victory with family, neighbors, and friends celebrating well into the night of February 4th. And...
Let me just thank the Eagles, Don Smolinski. Every time there is an event to benefit our nation's veterans, the Eagles come through, time and time again. So thank you so much for supporting our, those who serve in our military and our veterans. Whereas, the championship celebration continued on February 8th when the city and region descended upon South Broad Street and the Benjamin Franklin Parkway for the Eagles' Victory Parade. The scenes of cheering players and fans all showered in confetti and the stirring speeches from the victorious players are sure to live on in Philadelphia's memories for decades. And...
Whereas, you know, this is really awesome. This is a heck of a thing. Whereas, these joyous celebrations speak to Philadelphia's identity as the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. And moreover, they highlight of the bravery and dedication of the Philadelphia Police Department, the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management, SEPTA, and other key parade partners who worked tirelessly to allow Philadelphians to enjoy the festivities safely. And...
Whereas, this legislative body celebrates the Philadelphia Eagles with the historic season on and off the field and wishes its ascension to even greater heights in 2018 and seasons to come. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia congratulates the leadership, the Philadelphia Eagles, and all associated for their historic victory over who? The New England Patriots in Super Bowl what? 52. Congratulations.
Alright. And the Chair recognizes Don Smolinski for remarks.
Thank you. I have to say, it's wonderful to relive the entire season, so thank you very much. As I walked into the chamber here, I realized that my last visit in here was almost 20 years ago. And was not lost on me that during that time, the city council members and the city of Philadelphia did a lot of work on various legislative matters, in all in support of two projects in South Philadelphia, which was Lincoln Financial Field and Citizens Bank Park. And it's always been a private-public partnership, one where the city and the team, and really the residents of Philadelphia, have all been partners. And the vision and the dream was to bring championships to the city of Philadelphia. And both the Philadelphia Phillies and the Philadelphia Eagles, both through Citizens Bank Park and Lincoln Financial Field and the support of the entire city of Philadelphia and the region, have now brought a World Series title and a Super Bowl championship to the city of Philadelphia. We could not have done it without the support of everyone in this room, everyone in all of the municipal government, and obviously without all the support of the amazing fans who have cheered us on over the vast number of years. So it is with extreme pleasure and a privilege to share the championship with everyone and to say thank you for the proclamation today, and thank you for all of your support.
Counsel will be these. Awesome. Where did all the cameras go? I thought they were here for us. It's about the Eagles, huh? Alright, alright. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who will present a resolution recognizing eighth district community leaders for their outstanding service with Brother Ron Amor, Trapeeta Trump Mason, Keith Schenk, Michelle Kerr, I'm sorry, Michelle Kerr Spry, and Pastor Alex Velazquez Jr., Laquy Vu... Lee Quinn Vu, I'm sorry. And those accompanying him, please join the councilwoman at the podium. And joining the councilwoman, we have Councilman Taubenberger, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Green, Councilman O., and Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Good morning. Good morning. I thought the cameras were here for our community activists. They should have been. Thank you, Councilman Taubenberger. But I just really wanted to take a moment out, you know, when you think about the people in our communities that really make it happen, these are the folks in the Northwest, just some of the folks, that when you call them, no matter what time of day or night, when there is something that is happening, when you need help, they are at the ready, always. There's never a no, I can't, I'm not able, I won't. They make it happen. And so, we wanted to really recognize some of our community activists who go above and beyond, who put community first, always, who look out for not just their neighbor, their neighbor's neighbors, and their neighbor's neighbor's neighbors. They look out for entire communities, and we wanted to spend some time this morning just really saying thank you so much for all that you do. And so, we have a resolution that reads honoring and recognizing Brother Ron Amor, Trapeeta Mason, Keith Schenk, Michelle Kerr Spry, Pastor Alex Velazquez Jr., and Lee Quinn Vu for their significant contributions to advocacy and community service in Northwest Philadelphia. Whereas Brother Ron Amor has spent over 40 years as a preacher and community activist... Come stand here next to me while I... He has provided for the religious needs of congregations throughout Philadelphia, serving as a counselor, career coach, spiritual advisor, fundraiser, and volunteer for numerous organizations and charities. His community stewardship continues to positively impact the lives of children and families, particularly those at risk or in, or in need. And...
Whereas Trapeeta Mason is a Germantown resident, artist, and civic leader committed to artistically and thoughtfully developing and contributing to efforts that positively and sustainably impact communities. She is a member of the Green Street Artist Cooperative and reads her poetry widely and works extensively, conducting creative writing and community engagement workshops. Formerly serving as the Executive Director of Historic Germantown, Trapeeta is currently the Division Director of Intensive Behavioral Health Services at Comar and serves as a Vice President of the Germantown Services District, member of the Friends of Joseph E. Coleman Northwest Regional Library, and co-chair of the Education Outreach Committee on the Mayor's Task Force for Historic Preservation. And...
Whereas Keith Schenk is a youth public health and safety advocate focusing on violence prevention, civic engagement, and combating urban blight. He is the founder of One Love Guns Down, which seeks to counter the negative impact of community violence and police brutality. Keith also served as a drug and alcohol professional for 20 years and is credited with developing programs to address maladaptive behaviors that lead to recidivism. He is also serves as a more beautiful Philadelphia block captain and is currently pioneering hashtag Go Green Germantown as part in an effort to build urban resilience in communities impacted by blight.
And whereas, Michelle Kerr Spry is the founder and president of the Echo Collective, which trains and educates young women to echo a positive model of personal, social, and professional competencies. She has utilized her extensive... She has utilized her extensive experience in financial capability, education, and program development to design and implement housing counseling programs for community organizations throughout Philadelphia as his families at risk of mortgage foreclosure with financial management skill building and teach problem-solving skills to incarcerated individuals and returning citizens in housing, financial literacy, and job training.
And whereas Pastor Alex Velasquez Jr. has pastored the Oasis City Church in Alny, providing services to that community for over twenty-one years. His mission is to feed the hungry and clothe the naked. Each year, his church sponsors numerous community outreach activities, including the September 5th Street Block Event, the Hallelujah Fest, that's exciting, and food and toy giveaways on Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, which serve over seven hundred needy families. Seeing a need for the services to the youth in Alny, he has also founded the Oasis Youth Foundation, which endeavors to service at-risk youth in the community through both educational and recreational services.
Whereas Lee Quinn Vu is Executive Director of the Indo-Chinese American Council, which started in nineteen eighty-four in Philadelphia's Logan Neighborhood to support minority refugee and immigrant communities through education and community resources. Under the leadership of Ms. Vu, the IAC aims to build a community where education creates opportunities and growth for all immigrant, refugee, and minority children and families via after-school programs, summer programs, and adult classes. Serving as a member of Mayor Kenny's Transition Team on Immigrant and Multicultural Affairs, she works with elementary schools in the Northwest to develop supportive partnerships that prioritize family and community engagement. She also used to be my wife's boss. Therefore be it.
That's important. Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia honors and recognizes Brother Ron Amore, Trapeeta Mason, Keith Schenk, Michelle Kerr Spry, Alex Velasquez Jr., and Lee Quinn Vu for their dedication to the community service and their significant contributions in Northwest Philadelphia. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to each honoree as evidence of our sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Michelle Kerr Spry for remarks.
Wow, what a humbling experience. And I hope that I can speak the words that my pastors back here find fitting. I'll be brief with my words because it's not the words that we speak that have the power. It's the work that we do that we hope that has the impact. The great Muhammad Ali and the Honorable Shirley Chisholm have spoken these words. But I'd like to quote the tireless advocate, Marian Wright Ellamant, who's been my personal shero to capture this moment. Give me one second, I'm sorry. It is not the service, service is the rent we pay for being. It is the very purpose of life and not something you do in your spare time. My fellow members up here make their lives work, service. We appreciate that we are having this moment to be acknowledged. It's not why we do the work, however. But we do want to take this time to thank Councilwoman Cindy Bass. For this acknowledgement of our work, we are proud community servants of the Eighth District and invested members of the greater Philadelphia community. Thank you, Council, for taking a moment to acknowledge us. We are deeply honored and humbled by this moment. Thank you, and thank you for the work that you do every day. We are only hoping to emulate and make an impact just as you do. Thank you for your time. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Counselor be at ease. Counselor be at ease. Thank you and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who will present a resolution honoring the twentieth anniversary of Philadelphia International Airport's Exhibitions Program. Would Shelley Cameron and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Squillen, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilman O'Neill, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Dom, and Councilman Heenan, and Councilman Green.
So, it's truly a privilege and an honor to have the opportunity to honor and salute the Philadelphia International Airport Exhibitions Program. And if you're a frequent flyer such as myself and my wife and you take my boys on vacation with us, and if you want to talk about an experience, when you come to the City of Philadelphia or leaving the City of Philadelphia, you have to experience the exhibits that take place at the Philadelphia International Airport. They are very diverse, but most importantly, they enhance your experience as a customer flying and servicing the Philadelphia International Airport. And so, I just want to thank first and foremost the leadership for putting forth great exhibits and also my good friend, the CEO of the Philadelphia International Airport, Miss Shelley Cameron, for her leadership. And really, since she's taken the helm of the Philadelphia International Airport, has taken it to the next level while overseeing an eight-point-one-billion-dollar expansion. We talk a lot about diversity and inclusion here in this body. And the Philadelphia International Airport is among, if not the top departments, particularly when it comes to diversity and inclusion, under the leadership of Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. Prior to becoming a city council, had led that fight to make sure that the contracts, the professional services, opportunities are available for all to participate in at the Philadelphia International Airport. We will continue on that mission. And so, I thank my colleagues for joining me and the citation reads, honoring the twentieth anniversary of the Philadelphia International Airport Exhibitions Program and recognizing PHL for its dedication to improving its passionate experience through arts and cultural programming.
And whereas Philadelphia International Airport's Exhibitions Program was founded in nineteen ninety-eight to quote "provide visibility for Philadelphia's rich, unique cultural life and to enrich the traveling experience of the traveling public," end quote. And whereas, under its current leadership...
She really loves the airport. She took my spot. Whereas, the exhibits are located across the airport in all seven terminals and are curated throughout the year and presented in a variety of Philadelphia-centric art and promotes citywide events under the leadership of the founding director, exhibit Lee Douglas. The Exhibits Programs has organized more than four hundred exhibits featuring the works of artists and cultural institutions from across the city and region. So, I practiced my part and just read her part. Whereas...
Whereas the Exhibitions Program helps promote the city as a hub for artistic expression by highlighting the city's major cultural institutions, the mural arts program responsible for transforming hundreds of buildings across the city into artistic destinations has been featured in several exhibitions as have other prominent cultural institutions such as the Philadelphia Museum of Art, the Pennsylvania Academy of Fine Arts, and the Pennsylvania Ballet. And...
Whereas PHL's Exhibitions Program also helped promote the city's vibrant tourism industry, highlighting major sites like the Philadelphia Zoo and creative exhibits to promote major events such as the recent Democratic National Convention.
From a Dune Day to the members, the Exhibitions Program has made great efforts to showcase the various traditions and cultures that help to make up Philadelphia's unique cultural fabric. And...
Whereas, Mary Ann Mahoney should come up. Because we love her. Whereas, entire exhibits at PHL have been dedicated to the work of students from various local schools, including the Charter High School for Architecture and Design, Philadelphia High School for Creative and Performing Arts, Baldi Middle School, Universal Auden Reed, and Overbrook School for the Blind. And...
Whereas, past exhibits at PHL have also highlighted Philadelphia's central role in American history from the colonial era to the present day, presenting artifacts from pivotal moments such as the Constitutional Convention and the Civil Rights Movement. And...
Whereas, perhaps most importantly, the Exhibitions, the programs at Philadelphia International Airport has enriched the experience of nearly thirty million travelers who move through the airport each year. And passengers have commented that the exhibits provide a diversion from the stress of travel, create a positive reflection on the city of Philadelphia. And...
Whereas, the American Association of Airport Executives has written that, quote, "Airport art and culture art programs lure guests to return to the airport, promote the airport's cool factor through social media, and showcase the city of the region's art and culture." In recognition of the Exhibits Program's success, the Airport Executives Association has chosen PHL as to host the airport for its sixteenth annual arts in the airport workshop in October two thousand and eighteen.
And whereas the City of Philadelphia is home to a wealth of arts, culture, and history of which its citizens are truly proud, for the last twenty years, Philadelphia International Airport's Exhibitions Program has helped to highlight that unique heritage. And the city joins in celebrating this milestone anniversary. Now, therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors the twentieth anniversary of Philadelphia International Airport Exhibitions Program and recognizes PHL for its dedication to improving its passionate experience through arts and cultural programming. We would like to say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Cameron for remarks.
Wow is the right way to express the feeling from this. Thank you so much for this recognition. It's incredibly meaningful. We serve, as you heard, approximately thirty million passengers a year, and that translates into over eighty thousand people a day who are exposed to the art of Philadelphians in our airport. And those are Philadelphians that travel through the airport, but those from all over the world have a greater appreciation for this amazing city because of the program that Leah has put together. So, I am very grateful, Councilman Johnson, for your introduction of this resolution. And I understand Councilman Green, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Squillen also cosponsored it. So, again, thank you. I just want to take one moment and recognize the real people behind this program because it sure isn't me. Leah Douglas, Leah, come on up here with me. Leah is a proud graduate of the Temple Tyler School of Art, and it is her passion that has brought this program to life. As you heard, twenty years and over four hundred exhibits. And none of that would have happened without Leah. She also has a very strong team behind her. And so, I'd like to recognize those four members if they could come up too. We have Ursula Stube, Clint Takeda, Ahmed Salvador, and Rachel Jackson. And again, without them... Without them, we wouldn't have this wonderful program. So, Council President Clark, all members of council, thank you very much for this recognition and your support of the airport.
Counselor be at... Counselor be at ease.
Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk.
Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hormo Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160710, 180100, 180295, 180346, 180369, 1803383, 180384, 180385, 180386, 180387, 180389, 180390, 180395, 180396, 180397, 180422, 180426, and 180427. And I am pleased to advise you that on May 22, 2018, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at that session on May 10, 2018. And I am submitting here with the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the reappointment of Sunny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2340 North 19th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1238 North 15th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2006 North Woodstock Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 10R Nolan Court located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2304 through 06 Emerald Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1248 through 52 South 23rd Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District, and an ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commissioned for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide creditor payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions. And an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Public Employees' Retirement Code to expand Plan 16 to include certain employees, to change contribution rates for certain employees and the city, and to amend various provisions relating to the Deferred Retirement Option Plan drop, and to make technical amendments. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 100 South Broad Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printing in today's journal. Do you have any additional communication?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And the next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. This morning I offered one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the United States Congress to respond to the Supreme Court ruling in Epic Systems Court versus Lewis by passing legislation that guarantees the right of workers to pursue class action lawsuits in federal court.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce three bills, one on your behalf, and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations along Mantua Avenue, North 37th Street, and Ogden Street to enable the installation of the Mantua Avenue Greenway, and an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Felver Street from North 38th Street to North 37th Street eastbound, and an ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate department.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 6th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 46th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District which will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 28th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Also on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and a privileged resolution. I'd like to be recognized after the reading of the bill, and I have duties outside of City Hall and would be like permission to leave and be recorded. I on all bills and resolutions, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. These shall be granted.
An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by repealing certain provisions relating to temporary removal of firearms and adding a new chapter 102300, Philadelphia Gun Violence Protection, establishing procedures relating to the relinquishment or seizure of firearms from individuals who present an imminent threat of harm to the individual's own self or others.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce this bill as a continuation of the work that you, Mr. President, and my colleague, Councilman Johnson, are doing on the Special Committee on Gun Violence, which is a arduous task, but this might just be one arrow in the quiver to fight that violence. This bill represents a collaborative effort between our offices, the Philadelphia Police Department, the administration, the Law Department, Mayor Kenny, and the District Attorney Larry Kreiser. This bill helps schoolteachers who knows her student is displaying certain warning signs of predicted violence and fears that he will actually or she actually come back and carry out that violence at a public school. This bill will help women and men in the workplace who have domestic violence issues and are being threatened by a ex that says, "I'm going to come and create havoc in your workplace and threaten your very life." This bill will help ex-boyfriends, ex-girlfriends who are in possession of firearms that need a cooling off period from the emotion of being in that kind of situation. This bill will protect us from senseless acts of gun violence that continue to rise in our nation. And the one thing about it, Mr. President, is there is usually predictive behavior. Someone says, "I'm going to hurt people," and we don't believe them. We don't take them for their word. So this establishes a new section in Philadelphia Code to create a gun violence protection procedure or a protection order. So if someone comes to a public school, and we've had plenty of fistfights in schoolyards. I know as a teacher, Councilman, former Councilman Wilson Good has broken up a couple, but when a young man or woman says, "I'm gonna take it out on the whole school," we should believe them, and we should make sure that a responsible individual such as a teacher or a principal has an opportunity to go and petition a court to say, "Maybe we should check that household for firearms and weapons of mass destruction." Just makes sense. And this procedure will protect people in this building when people may have constituent service issues and because of mental illness and other pressures actually come and take it out on your and my staff. So the Philadelphia Gun Violence Protection Procedure will allow the following. It will allow petitions of gun violence in order to be filed by school officials, family members, household members, police officers, assistant district attorneys with the knowledge that individuals present themselves as an imminent threat to themselves and/or others. So this petition will allow within five days a court hearing so that someone can say, "You know, you were shooting off steam. We don't believe that you present a threat to others. Here's your guns back." Or if there is a need for further action, whether it is mental health intervention or other services that can be provided, that we take a step to prevent senseless violence that seems to be growing in our country. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring our local American Idol star and former City Council intern Michael J. Woodard for making it to the top five of the series and congratulating him on his participation in the upcoming American Idol Live Tour.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have five non-privileged resolutions, one privileged resolution, and one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 13 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Water and Sewer by amending Section 13306 entitled Water Pipe Laid by Property Owners and by amending Section 13406 entitled Sewers Constructed by Property Owners by revising certain provisions to allow for private water and sewer services to be constructed to serve units in planned communities and condominiums.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development and the Homeless to hold hearings to examine the effects of gentrification in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1248 through 52 South 23rd Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District. And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And it will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Michael Kopistansky as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2023.
And it will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the reappointment of Sunny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
Also referred to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2304 through 06 Emerald Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 9204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City and adding Section 9205 entitled Sidewalk Sales to exempt sales of fresh fruits and vegetables on the abutting sidewalk of a property by the owner or tenant of that property from the requirements of Sections 9204 and 9205.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to prohibit the sale of tobacco products, electronic smoking devices, and unapproved nicotine delivery products at establishments where healthcare services are provided, including where pharmaceutical drugs are sold.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Lynn Field Terrace on the occasion of her retirement as Executive Director of Center in the Park for her decades of service to the city of Philadelphia and older Philadelphians.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have six bills, the first of which is on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Public Employees' Retirement Code to expand Plan 16 to include certain employees, to change contribution rates for certain employees and the city, to amend various provisions relating to the Deferred Retirement Option Plan drop, and to make technical amendments.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing 7254 Castor Incorporated, doing business as Boucan, to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 7254 Castor Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Rising Sun Avenue between Adams Avenue and East Godfrey Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 250 by striking from the city plan vacating the legally open portions of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Falkridge Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location on Castor Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Boucan to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 7254 Castor Avenue.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill and one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections by adding a new chapter 194300 entitled Monthly Reconciliation Reporting.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Finance to conduct a full and comprehensive investigatory public hearing to review the corrective audit of the consolidated cash account as well as the accompanying corrective action plan upon completion of the audit performed by the firm Horsey, Buckner, and Hefler.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McGinn.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. I have one bill and one resolution cosponsored by Parker and Squilla, and I'd like to be recognized after reading both of them into the record.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by limiting the exemption of certain real estate taxes for improvements to or construction of certain real properties.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee of the Hall to explore the geographic scope of the 10-year real estate tax abatement.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Toppen. Did you want to be recognized?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Council President. Today, these two items, a bill and a resolution, will, I hope, continue a critically important and overdue conversation about school funding, development, gentrification, and council's responsibility for revising the city's 20-year-old tax abatement program. I want to first thank and acknowledge the work of our colleague, former Councilman Wilson Good Jr., who has for years championed the need for revising our city's tax abatement program, one of the most generous in the nation. Councilman Good, like many of us, never lost sight of the fact that as policymakers, we must continue to fine-tune public policy to ensure that it is equitable. The 10-year real estate tax abatement originally called upon City Council to designate and target, quote, "deteriorating areas of the city that were physically blighted as defined by substandard housing, vacant land, and delinquent properties." Its goal at the time was to help revitalize our communities, retain residents, and attract home and business owners. And there is no question that parts of our city would not have been rebuilt without the 10-year tax abatement. There is no question that parts of our city may still benefit from incentivized development and rehabilitation. These proposals do not diminish that reality, but it is time to look to the future. Last year alone, the city and our schools forfeited over $40 million in tax revenue from the abatement. And while some areas of the city have been marked by rapid growth and development, studies also show or suggest that the abatement might also be contributing to disproportionately high displacement risk for longtime residents. The Economy League of Greater Philadelphia has recommended that smart and strategic tax abatement reform could yield significant revenue. And this week, the city of Philadelphia will release even more data on the tax abatement. And as we look to the weeks ahead, time and again, council has been asked to step up to the plate to support our schoolchildren, and this body has delivered each and every time. Now we're being asked to do it again, and this time it's by six-year-old Dean Pagan at Calmly Elementary who ate paint chips off of his desk because, who was lead poisoned because of paint chips that flaked off of his desk because he wanted his desk to be clean. It's now coming from fourth grader Ashley Garner at Hamilton Elementary who has missed school days and has had terrifying asthma attacks because of the conditions at her school building. And it's being asked now by second grader Lucas Sims who suffered from carbon monoxide poisoning at Loesch Elementary School. There is no question that the tax abatement, that modifying the tax abatement can help us show our commitment to the true intent of the tax abatement legislation, to help rebuild and revitalize neighborhoods. to the true intent of the tax abatement legislation, to help rebuild and revitalize neighborhoods that are in actuality distressed, and modifying the abatement can also show our commitment to support funds for our schools. I look forward to that important policy conversation ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubman-Burger.
Good afternoon, Council President. Thank you. I have no bills nor resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills, two on your behalf, and one nonprivileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets by amending Chapter 11500 entitled Paving by creating Section 11508 entitled Private Development Projects by providing that the Department of Streets may establish regulations to require certain private development projects to pave and mill the adjacent roadway.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets by amending Chapter 11600 entitled Construction Encroachments and Projections Over on and Under Streets by amending Section 11608 entitled Excavation and Construction in and Under the Sidewalks by providing that area encroachments may extend into the street line as far as are required by the applicable utility provider. And an ordinance authorizing Plaza Garibaldi Incorporated doing business as Frida Cantina to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1,000 Wolf Street.
Refer to committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution supporting the concept of the nine-county region of circuit trails working toward the completion of 500 miles of trails in the greater Philadelphia region by 2025.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
Next order of business is a report from committees. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report for the Committee of the Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee of the Hall reports four bills and one resolution with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hall, which has referred Bill Number 180108 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Philadelphia to enter into lease agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development under which the city would lease to paid on a project-by-project basis certain land and facilities in the Fairmount Park System, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia system, and which would permit paid to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations in conformity with the Economic Development Financing Law. And Bill Number 180166 entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion. And Bill Number 180167 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax to increase the rate of realty transfer tax. And Bill Number 180168 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates. And Resolution Number 180124 entitled A Resolution Improving the Rebuild Project Statement Including Annual Budgets for Project Expenditures for Fiscal Years 2018 and 2019, a list of city properties to be included in the program, and a Master Economic Opportunity Plan. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180108, 180166, 180167, and 180168.
We need a second. It has been moved in second, properly second, that the rules of council be suspended, so to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 180108, 180166, 180167, and 180168. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. This will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Resolution 180124 will be placed on the final passage calendar of the next session of council. First, chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask to be excused from the rest of this session of council-related activity and recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Permission granted, and the record will reflect your votes. The chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee on a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Rules reports seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chief Clerk will please read the report.
The Committee on Rules, which has referred Bill Number 180015 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Callahill Business Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of the Municipal Authorities Act. And Bill Number 180217 entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Revising Requirements for Accessory Signs Located Within the Area Bounded by Juniper Street, East Passaic Avenue, and Mifflin Street. And Bill Number 180286 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bounded by Girard Avenue, Broad Street, Fairmount Avenue, and Corinthian Street. And Bill Number 180384 entitled An Ordinance Approving the 15th Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the Cecil B. Moore Avenue Urban Renewal Area, being the area generally bounded by 15th Street on the east, Jefferson Street on the south, 19th Street on the west, and Montgomery Avenue on the north, including the 15th Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan. And Bill Number 180385 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bounded by Ridge Avenue, Gorgas Lane Extended, Henry Avenue, Valley Avenue, and Domelow Lane. And Bill Number 180395 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bounded by Bustleton Avenue, Solley Avenue, Eastwood Avenue, and Stanwood Street. And Bill Number 180397 entitled An Ordinance Approving the 42nd Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the Model Cities Urban Renewal Area, being the area beginning on the northwest corner of Front Street and Spring Garden Street, including the 34th Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the seven bills that we just read into the record by Mr. Decker.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the reading of this day, Bill Numbers 180015, 180217, 180286, 180384, 180385, 180395, and 180397. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report of the Committee of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Finance reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Chief Clerk, would you please read the report?
The Committee on Finance, which has referred Bill Number 180261 entitled An Ordinance Amending Subsection 192604, Subparagraph 6 of the Philadelphia Code, under which businesses may enter into agreements to make contributions to community development corporations and certain other organizations to receive credits against business income and receive taxes by increasing the number of businesses for which the credit shall be made available. And Bill Number 180392 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by amending Section 191405 entitled Excluded Transactions by replacing gendered marital signifiers. And Bill Number 180393 entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 19, Chapter 2900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low Income Special Tax Provisions to make certain technical changes. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180261, 180392, and 180393.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 180261, 180392, and 180393. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading of our calendar for today. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gimm for a report on the Committee of Children and Youth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Children and Youth reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chief Clerk, would you please read the report?
The Committee on Children and Youth, which has referred Bill Number 180368 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 93500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Criminal Record Screening Standards by adding a section providing for prohibition on consideration of or inquiry about an applicant's juvenile records at any stage of the employment or licensing process and adding definitions. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180368.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading of this day, Bill Number 180368. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading of today's calendar. The chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson. Johnson to read. Let me see here. I got it confused. What committee is this here?
Commerce.
Commerce. Now recognizes Councilwoman Marie McKeone Sanchez with a report of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair would ask the clerk to please read the report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, which has referred Bill Number 180133 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17104 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Prerequisites to the Execution of City Contracts by requiring contractors seeking to do business with the city to disclose certain demographic information regarding individuals serving as board members and executive officers. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180133.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Number 180133. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business will be a consideration of the calendar, and I note that the bills just read from the committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have been first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next council session. As there are no additional bills of the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a motion concerning the bills in the second reading of the final passage calendars. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to considering the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendar. Bill Numbers 171114, 180171, 180285, 180287, 180288, 180289, 180290, 180291, 180292, 180294, 180369, 180386, 180394, 180422, and 170244.
Again, it has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Greenlee. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendar today. Numbers 180526, 180528, 180531, 180532, 180533, 180535, 180174, 180175, and 180176. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we consider these resolutions and bills, we will now consider public comment. The public comment most concerned matters are on the second and final passage calendars today for possible action and comment. All speakers must sign in. In order to testify, if you have not already signed in today's session, please do so to your right, my left. Give your name to the sergeant-at-arms at the table, and then we will consider your testimony in order in which they have signed in. You have three minutes to speak. In order of fairness, we wish to speak, we will intend to be faithful in considering that the time is limited, and you will see a green light in the podium when there is 30 seconds remaining. Your time and your light will turn yellow, which will be reminder to conclude your remarks. There are three minutes. After the three minutes have passed, the red light will indicate to the sergeant-at-arms and to yourself, at that point, the podium will be offered to the next speaker. I also reserve the right, if pursuant to the rules of council, to limit the repetitive comments on the same subject matter. I would ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 180526, 180532, 180533, 180170678.
Good afternoon. This is the Official Decree of the People and Remand Damned Quote Warranty. As such, requires immediate action remedies. Every week, council, mayor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. Trust in public servants in government is required. As we celebrate Memorial Day, people remember who served to defend the people. Would people serve far from home, knowing that their government was stealing the houses, persons, and effects of their neighbors? How can the people trust council, mayor, and others when they steal my home, steal my law-required just compensation, steal my reimbursed expenses, steal the pride and the dignity of owning my home? As public servants, you are bound by oath, law, and constitution so that you don't become the legalized version of the criminals as Jefferson warned. Does a RICO-style conspiracy to deny rights save you from prosecution? If committing one crime one time would lay people in jail, why hasn't the Attorney General investigated and prosecuted? The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 23A1, 23A4, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 PACSA, 701, 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS, 158965, 141330, 144056, appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-all government must have its charge of governing vote until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act, any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitutional laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Christine Riddick, commenting on 180537.
Good afternoon. Yes. Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Christine Riddick, and I'm here today in reference to Resolution 18053 introduced by Councilman O., and I'd like to thank Councilman O. I'm here today to ask City Council for your informed support of that bill, and my son, each of you by now should have a booklet. I will not go into the details. I will not go into what's the details. This is a booklet of actual factual and scientific proof of innocent. And I brought this booklet and took it to each of the councilperson's office on April the second, when I did a rally outside of City Hall. My son's case right now is at Supreme Court, so again, I'm saying I'm here to get support from city council, not blindly, but informed support. This booklet contains all the proof, not that I've written, it is written, and it's backed up by the City of Philadelphia's ballistics, the medical examiner's office, and an expert, forensic expert. Also, the Superior Court. This is the first document inside this booklet states that an innocent man sits in prison for no better reason than a failed statue. That means that is a technical error of why my son is sitting in prison for twenty-six years and eight months. And I'm here to ask for your support when a statue is more important than a human, a human life. All of us should take responsibility in changing that particular law and lifting your voices up with me, that an innocent man, not because his mother says so or he says so, but the proof is right here. The proof has been available since nineteen ninety-one. The climate in Philadelphia was not right for criminal, I mean for reform, justice reform. This is the best climate that we have had. I have never seen a light at the end of the tunnel until now in Philadelphia with the changes in the district attorney's office. And with the help of Councilman O. and others, I'm hoping that the council, every council member, regardless of what party you're at, to support an innocent man's plight and his family's plight. And if you have any questions, my name and number is in the book. If you can't find it in the book, I'm on the daily news. Go back to January the ninth, February the twenty-second, and there's a whole bunch of information, my email address and my name, if you have any questions, additional questions other than what this book has. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Clifford Smith, commenting on one eight zero five three seven.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My sister was just spoke.
Just state your name for the record.
So whatever she-
Sir, just state your name for the record.
Oh, Clifford Smith.
Thank you.
I'm the uncle of Eric Riddick. What my sister just said is, I'll repeat the same thing that she just said. We have, my nephew has been, has spent twenty-six years, eight months in prison, and it has scientific and proof that he is innocent. What we're here for is to, to the bill, what's the bill number again?
One eight oh five oh seven.
That's introduced by Councilman O., Councilman Ho. Basically, what I'm here to do is just say what my sister just said, to ask city council to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony today, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We now consider today's bill consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number one seven one 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 four, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a No Truck Parking Regulation on Both Sides of the Six Thousand Block of Van Dyke Street. And Bill number one eight zero one seven one, entitled An Ordinance Submitting Section nine two oh eight of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by Permitting Sidewalk Cafes to be Maintained on Frankfurt Avenue Both Sides from Bligh Avenue to Wellington Street and Cotman Avenue Both Sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leon Street. And Bill number one eight zero two eight five, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to Install, Own, and Maintain Various Encroachments at One Convention Avenue. And Bill number one eight zero two eight seven, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number seventy-two by Relocating the southeasterly house line and curb line of a Portion of Carson Street between Baker Street and Silverwood Street, thereby widening this said Carson Street and a Portion of the cartway thereof. And Bill number one eight zero two eight eight, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Grades on a Portion of City Plan Numbers fifty-two S. and fifty-three S. in the area lying southeast of Penrose Avenue and southwest of Twenty-Sixth Street by Striking from the City Plan a Vacating an Irregularly Shaped Portion of the Right-of-Way of Penrose Avenue along the southeasterly side thereof, relocating a Portion of the southeasterly Local Service Roadway of Penrose Avenue from Twenty-Sixth Street to a Point southwestwardly therefrom, and placing on the City Plan a Right-of-Way for Sewer and Drainage Purposes and Public Utility Purposes. And Bill number one eight zero two eight nine, entitled An Ordinance Legalizing an Existing Building and Honing Encroachment at twenty-one oh one Reed Street. And Bill number one eight zero two nine zero, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Paving of the Relocated Southeasterly Local Service Roadway of Penrose Avenue from Twenty-Sixth Street to a Point approximately one thousand three hundred twenty-three feet southwestwardly therefrom. And Bill number one eight zero two nine one, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a No Truck Parking Regulation on Both Sides of Red Lion Road from Jamison Avenue to Northeast Avenue. And Bill number one eight zero two nine two, entitled An Ordinance Legalizing an Existing Building Encroachment and, a Proposed Building Encroachment at thirteen thirty-two Reed Street. And Bill number one eight zero two nine four, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a One-Way Regulation on Conlon Street from Worcester Street to North Twenty-first Street Eastbound. And Bill number one eight zero three six nine, entitled An Ordinance Committing Section nine of an Ordinance, Bill number one five zero three seven seven, approved June eighteen two thousand fifteen, and amended by Bill number one six zero five six six, approved June sixteen two thousand sixteen, and Bill number one seven zero five six six, approved July eleven two thousand seventeen, and titled An Ordinance Authorizing the Construction, Ownership, and Maintenance of Various Encroachments into the Right-of-Way of Market Street, Philbert Street, Eleventh Street, Tenth Street, Ninth Street, and Eighth Street, and Authorizing the Assignment of Certain Rights with Respect to an Overhead Pedestrian Bridge Above Philbert Street, west of the House Line of Ninth Street to be Assigned, by Further Authorizing the Streets Department to Approve Encroachments Consistent with Plans Approved by the Philadelphia City Planning Commission and the City of Philadelphia Art Commission, by Extending the Time for Compliance with the Authorization Conditions therein. And Bill number one eight zero three eight six, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Marty Incorporated Doing Businesses La Buse Bistro to Install, Own, and Maintain an Open-Air Sidewalk Cafe at forty-two oh one Ridge Avenue. And Bill number one eight zero three nine four, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a No Truck Parking Regulation on Bennett Road from Roosevelt Boulevard to its Terminus further northwestwardly therefrom. And Bill number one eight zero four two two, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Phillies to Construct, Own, and Maintain Encroachments Consisting of Security Bollards, Permanent Operable Barricades, and Removable Barricades with Permanent Foundations Along and Adjacent to Citizens Bank Park located at One Citizens Bank Way. And Bill number one seven zero two four four, entitled An Ordinance Committing Title Twelve of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Traffic Code, by Amending Chapter twelve, twelve hundred, entitled Traffic Control Devices, to Require a Report, Recommendation, and Appropriate Safety Improvements Regarding Hazardous Intersections, and by Amending Chapter twelve, fourteen hundred, entitled Penalties and Procedure for Violations, to Provide for a Reward Program, all under certain terms and conditions.
Sit, Mr. Decker. Thank you. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, can you call a roll? Being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones is voting aye on all bills, Councilman O'Neil is voting aye on all bills, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. Majority of members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on our second reading and final passes calendar on our regular calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you can read number one eight oh five twenty-six.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the thirty-seventh ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh five twenty-six is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh five twenty-eight.
A resolution calling upon the School District of Philadelphia to Guarantee Access to Traditional Yellow School Bus Transportation for Seventh and Eighth Grade Students Attending the School District of Philadelphia, Schools of the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, and Other Eligible Educational Institutions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh five twenty-eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh five thirty-one.
A resolution calling for the Creation of a School, Building, and Facilities Task Force, which shall review, assess, and recommend capital needs and priorities of the Philadelphia School District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. One eight oh five thirty-one is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh five thirty-two.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the nineteenth ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh five thirty-two is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh five thirty-three.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the seventh ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One eight oh five three three is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh five thirty-five.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the twenty-fifth ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh five thirty-five is adopted. Mr. Decker. Mike. Let me make sure. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title of one eight oh one seventy-four.
An ordinance submitting Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by Adopting the Two Thousand and Fifteen Edition of the International Residential Code is Published by the International Code Council with Previously Adopted Amendments thereto as Adopted to the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones is voting aye, Councilman O'Neil is voting aye, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, one eight oh one seventy-five.
An ordinance submitting Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, by revising and clarifying certain provisions, making corrections for compliance with the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, and making technical changes.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones is voting aye, Councilman O'Neil is voting aye, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, one eight oh one seventy-six.
An ordinance submitting Title Four of the Philadelphia Code by Adopting the Two Thousand and Eighteen of the International Codes as Published by the International Code Council with Previously Adopted Amendments thereto as Authorized by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act to amend the following Philadelphia Subcodes: Building Code, Existing Building Code, Energy Conservation Code, Fuel-Gas Code, Mechanical Code, and Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones is voting aye, Councilman O'Neil is voting aye, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring our local American Idol star and former city council intern, Michael J. Woodard, for making it to the top five of the series, and congratulating him on his participation in the upcoming American Idol Live Tour, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Who?
Introduced by Councilman Jones.
Gimm? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for its adoption.
It's moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to Hold Hearings to Examine the Effects of Gentrification in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Lynn Fields Harris on the occasion of her retirement as Executive Director of Center in the Park for her decades of service to the City of Philadelphia and older Philadelphians, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Finance to Conduct a Full and Comprehensive Investigatory Public Hearing to Review the Corrective Audit of the Consolidated Cash Account as Well as the Accompanying Corrective Action Plan upon Completion of the Audit Performed by the Firm Horssey, Buckner, and Heffler, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Reynolds Brown is voting nay.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee of the Whole to Explore the Geographic Scope of the Ten-Year Real Estate Tax Abatement introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just would like to point out that as Christine Riddick stated, we did distribute additionally copies of the booklet that she put together, which is on each councilperson's desk. My resolution is requesting the Governor to consider providing a pardon to Eric Riddick. It's kind of extraordinary, but I think the first page of this book has extraordinary statements in it. It's a decision, concurring decision by Justice Fitzgerald and the President of Superior Court bender, both stating that likely an innocent man sits in jail only because of the failings of the statute. It is hard to imagine how a statute would prevent proof of innocence from being considered by judges, but in fact, that's what happens. Unfortunately, this PCRA needs to be reformed because I imagine that any time there is evidence that would prove someone not guilty in a- scientific, substantial, and undisputed manner, that most citizens would be shocked to find that that evidence cannot come in front of appellate court because of this statute. There are other avenues. It's true, you can file writ of habeas corpus, go to federal court. Many people don't understand that. They don't have the wherewithal. It is very fortunate for Mr. Riddick that his mother has continued to stay on this and his wife over 26 years. So I will look to ask for everyone's support to vote on this resolution next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Council President. My mother's name was Sadie Toni Reynolds. She raised my brother and sisters on pearls of wisdom that we now call Sadieisms. Recently, as recently as last Thursday following city council, I was reminded of one of my mother's Sadieisms. When you care deeply about an issue or an injustice, when a matter taps or tugs at your heartstrings in a visceral way, do not be silent. Recognize that silence is betrayal. No one should stand by and allow or tolerate a highly qualified, credentialed woman, a well-respected professional with two decades of experience in the financial sector, to be used as a scapegoat by multiple departments over multiple years through multiple administrations in the City of Philadelphia government. Today, I rise to raise my voice as I will not allow any woman to be thrown the blame of years of mistakes, inefficiencies, mishandlings, mistakes, or lack of oversight when she, an African-American woman, has finally been given a seat at the table. Thank you to Mayor Jim Kenny for recruiting, identifying, and hiring competent women with impeccable credentials and exceptional experience. Our City Treasurer, Rashida Johnson, is no exception. Our City Treasurer has served as an investment banker, financial advisor, and bond issuer in her stellar 20-year career. She has also worked in the Municipal Finance Department at Loop Capital Markets in Philadelphia, and moreover, also served as our City Assistant to the Director of Finance and Debt Management. Throughout her career, our City Treasurer has managed over $7 billion, that's billion with a B, in transactions with complex technical and analytical experience. Therefore, she has a proven record of leadership and excellence working in both the government and private sector. My mother would say she has earned her stripes. I commend our City Treasurer on her commitment to being completely transparent in our government. I thank her for not only bringing the issue of the unreconciled bank accounts to our attention, but also releasing an RFP to find a third party to resolve the problems that were present long before she was appointed to her post. Let me be clear. So to ensure that there is no interpretation or misinterpretation of my intent, I have chosen to speak up and speak out as an advocate for a highly qualified woman with an unblemished record of performance prior to deciding and choosing the opportunity to serve the citizens of our city. Let's review the facts. Rashida Johnson assumed her position in January 2016. The city has known about these issues as far back as 2014 during another administration, when several employees in the Treasury Office responsible for daily bookkeeping suddenly left their jobs. Fact, findings reveal that Johnson is the only treasurer to reconcile payroll records since 2010. Has anyone probed why her predecessor did not address the missing $27 million? My homework tells me that Rashida Johnson's predecessors did not reconcile payroll for seven years. Based on homework, the good news I have to report is that one of her predecessors has fully acknowledged that the discovery itself is the result of her diligent work. Thank you, Rob DeBeau. Comptroller Reinhardt stated that, and I quote, "Not reconciling accounts is an inducement for wrongdoing," end quote. Really? However, if there was any wrongdoing, it was not on Rashida Johnson's watch. Ms. Johnson inherited this unresolved financial issue. The operative word is inherited. In fact, as best as I can tell, Rashida is the only professional who took steps to clean up this mess that other professionals failed to address. Ms. Johnson identified the problem. Ms. Johnson did not run away from the discovery. Ms. Johnson identified the best course of action to resolve the problem, and as I tell my daughter all the time, look the line in the mouth and say, "I will not be eaten." Ms. Johnson has now proceeded to fix the problem. It is now fair that we allow the City Treasurer to solve this seven-year problem on the city's behalf. It is now appropriate that we allow the City Treasurer and the designated third party to complete their assignment accurately, not rapidly, but accurately. Yes, it is absolutely appropriate that we, as members of city council, probe, inquire about the processes within city departments, drill down, and ask the tough questions that we all do every day about how we spend our taxpayers' dollars. This is our duty as elected members of this legislative body. However, in fulfilling this duty, we should also be fair and judicious as we seek the answers to our legitimate questions. Fact, since the news has been made public, there have been departures from the finance and treasurer's office. Did anyone look behind the facts? Did anyone care to look at any of the past history? Our colleague Councilman Dom and others have compared the urgency of chief financial officers and accountants in the private sector and business to that of Ms. Johnson's team. Legitimate. Many of us are aware that many businesses in the private and non-practic sectors manage CFO transitions very delicately and often allot several months for onboarding, shadowing, and intel sharing between the departing and incoming financial officers. I witnessed this up close and personal at the Urban League of Philadelphia with the transition of their leadership, and the Philadelphia Visitors and Convention Bureau with the transition of their comptroller. What I now know is that the City of Philadelphia currently does not follow that model, leaving our treasurer or any treasurer to navigate departmental finances of varying sizes and complexities with little to no assistance. Fact, having conferred with a number of experts over the last week, including my sister who's a CPA charged with finding offshore accounts for the federal government, it takes a treasurer up to six months to begin to grasp and fully analyze all accounts and functions, especially when there has been a complete lack of disclosure from those who they have departed the position and left behind limited information with limited help for the transition, be that intentional or unintentional. Fact, Ms. Johnson discovered the lack of reconciliations in May of 2016, five months after she started and was working without the help and guidance of her predecessor. There have been many criticisms of Ms. Johnson, and most of them have come from white men. Everyone has the luxury to seize the opportunity to criticize, to cast judgment, to have an opinion. That's easy. No one gets to dispute the facts. So if we're going to throw the net, let us cast the net wide and include everyone who had a role and shared in the responsibility of this longstanding, unresolved financial matter before January 2016 when Rashida Johnson arrived. Fact, what so many people have failed to disclose is that shortly after Johnson took her post as treasurer in 2016, and after she discovered the lack of reconciliations, she left for leave, maternity leave, to take care of her newborn child. She did not return until December of 2016, several months later. Due to the fact that the City of Philadelphia did not implement the opportunity to work from home until January 2018, just four months ago, Rashida Johnson was not able to adequately address these issues, and neither did anyone above her pay grade despite knowing of the discoveries. I repeat, we can all have an opinion. No one can argue the facts. Therefore, in my personal opinion, this is yet another example of a disguised discrimination, mistreatment, and lack of policies in place to ensure the success of pregnant professional women and other mothers across professions in our city. Now, I'm not surprised, because as I tell my daughter all the time, women must walk on water to be considered equal. Black and brown women have to walk on water excellently and fly flawlessly to be equal. Rashida Johnson is not unlike the women in this city council. She has what my mother calls gumption. I call moxie, and what my daughter calls keeping it 100, telling it like it is. Ms. Johnson's credentials, experience, work ethic, dedication, honesty, and integrity should not be challenged. I cannot be silent because silence is betrayal. In closing, Comptroller Reinhardt, who's also a working mother, said, "There is a cultural change that needs to happen on the financial management of this city." I agree. However, certainly not to the detriment of working mothers, pregnant mothers, black and brown women, women period, and the children that these women come from. Perhaps the cultural change needs to start with us, those in leadership, to accommodate, encourage, and treat working mothers with impressive credentials of all socioeconomic backgrounds with the same yardstick we measure others. Fact, a large number of gender-blind studies conducted within various workforces show that women are often held to impossible standards and put in positions to take the blame for others' mistakes. No. Given all I have read and learned on this matter, I will not allow that circumstance here in this city council so blatantly and in my personal point of view with unwarranted judgment. One of my heroes, Shonda Rhimes, stated, and I quote, "There is such an interest in things being equal, and such a weary acceptance that it is not," end quote. So I stand today to say I am not weary of standing up and advocating for yet another woman, most especially competent and qualified women with unblemished careers when they have been unrightfully belittled and accused of oversights, nondisclosures, and mistakes created on someone else's watch. Mr. President, we can all have an opinion. No one can dispute the facts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Mr. President, let me say how proud we are of all that was just said. And in fact, he's a male, but he's good. Her deputy or the vice chair of her finance, he's good too. But she has, from the very beginning, been here, been with us, has been willing to give all that she has, and I'm in total agreement and very proud of all those facts that Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown has said. And I wanted to also add in this issue about Eric Riddick. I remember when he was born. I've known his mother all these years in her fight, and we want her to know we stand with her as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to acknowledge and also second the comments of my colleague Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown. I've had multiple interactions with the Treasurers Department since she's only have taken on that position, but it's also common knowledge that this issue that she's addressing didn't start on her watch. So I just want to thank the Councilwoman for stepping up to the plate and addressing this particular issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, in the booklet entitled "In Pursuit of Justice", on the second page of the Support Letter section, you will see a letter from a young woman by the name of Suzanne Christina. Here she is writing as an advocate, but we know her because she's performed as a singer and songwriter here in this council. She is also a resident of the 9th Councilmatic District, and she has been advocating on behalf of Mr. Riddick long before even this resolution was introduced in council. I just needed to say to my constituent, your councilperson is paying attention to you. I see that your advocacy was presented before us today, and thank you. I also want to say a special thank you to Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman, you know, as an English teacher, there is nothing more frustrating for me when someone attempts to exude passion, but they have demonstrated no ability to do homework. I appreciate the homework that you have done on this issue and the light that you shed on an issue and the subject that I have not and had not investigated in the great detail and done the research that you had uncovered here today. I think one of the things that was most shocking is that it would be interesting to hear what kind of response and feedback we did hear from her predecessors who are still actively engaged in our city as she bears the brunt of conversation regarding the future. So I'm just saying thank you, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, for doing your homework and sharing the results of your research and data-driven efforts with all of your colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
I'd just like to echo Councilwoman Parker. I was not aware of all these facts. I wasn't clear, I never was aware of what was going on, but Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown, you very clearly, in great detail, enlightened all of us about what is happening. Someone is being blamed for something that is not their fault. Certainly, they shouldn't be blamed, and we can follow through now and understand in a much better light what is happening. So thank you for your diligence and your willingness to stand up for someone who we haven't even heard about facing these accusations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to salute my colleague Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown for her commentary. I've known Ms. Johnson since when I worked for Councilman Tasco, and Councilman Tasco was the Chair of the Finance Committee, and in the role that Ms. Johnson had both at Loop Capital and Seabird, both minority investment banks, she provided great information and evidence to the City of Philadelphia and gave different ideas and suggestions that benefited the city quite a bit. When the administration, previous administration was trying to sell PGW, it was Rashida Johnson, Derek McNeil at that time at Loop Capital, gave us some ideas regarding a commercial paper program when we could not go to market in reference to getting additional money for Philadelphia Gas Works that she provided. That was an outstanding opportunity and idea that saved and provided an opportunity for the City of Philadelphia to bring in capital for PGW. That idea was also shared by the airport, who also did a commercial paper program, when the airport also could not go to market because they were in the process of going through their capacity expansion program. I do find it interesting that based on her role as City Treasurer, and one of the things I've done since I've been in this body, I've asked questions about what are the number of firms that we're using from an investment banking perspective in reference to being book runners for bond issuance, and I know Ms. Johnson and her staff have been very diligent about making sure we have inclusion for minority firms, special investment banking firms, and other professional services in reference to how we issue debt in this city, something that we have not always historically done because often it's been said that certain firms don't have the capacity to do certain types of offerings when the people that have run some of these minority firms have worked at majority firms, have gone to the same colleges and universities that some of their non-minority counterparts have gone to. So I do find it interesting that in her goal to try to address diversity, this issue is being brought up on her watch. So I commend Councilwoman Brown for her commentary, and I support Ms. Johnson as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. And with that, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
I thank you. Inviting everyone, in particular, the Energy Authority will be holding its annual briefing for members and staff immediately following council session, and this is about the $1 billion 10-year initiative to invest in energy jobs throughout our city. Please, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, June 7, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to council stand adjourn until Thursday, June 7, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.